And Bob.
I'm participating via Zoom because of work travel. Thank you.
All right, this is case twenty-three, zero, 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 one, three. We'll see him. It's a conditional use for a daycare center. The owner is Monawar Hussein. The address is three North, three, seven, zero, Klein Road, West Chicago, six, zero, one, eight, five. It's located in Wayne Township. It's approximately one acre on Well and Septic. Tonight's hearing was published in the Daily Herald on April fifth. And the hearing, of course, is tonight, April twentieth. Comments? The building department says no objection or concerns with the concept of this petition, but additional information may be required at the time of the permit application. Do that, no comments. Health department says objections, and they sent documentation. Stormwater has no objections. Public works states their office has no jurisdiction in this matter. Outside of the county, city of West Chicago had no comment, or no comments were received. No comments were received from the village of Carroll Stream, the village of Bartlett, the village of Wayne, and Wayne Township. Itself, the township highway department also had no comment, no comments were received. West Chicago Fire District, no comments were received. And the school district twenty-five said no objections. Forest Preserve weighed in by saying, "The Forest Preserve District of DuPage County staff has reviewed the information, provided in this notice, and due to the sizable distance between the subject property and the district property, we have no specific comments." Having said that, we can get ready to proceed. Who's representing the applicant tonight? Do you have any witnesses tonight?
No.
All right. Why don't you raise your hand if you're sworn in?
Would you raise your right hand, please? You just sadly swear affirm the testimony about giving this cause and out hearing of the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Do you swear to tell the truth?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Okay. I guess we could start when the chairman comes, he can just pick up. It's your application. You have a survey.
Yes.
Is this? Survey is from July twenty-ninth of what year, twenty nineteen? It should probably have more updated surveys, so we'll take this now, but you're gonna have to get one in. And do you have a site plan for what you propose?
I submitted one.
Is that what the orange markings on this are?
Right.
All right, who put, who drew those? The? You did it. All right, so these aren't on the survey itself, you've done it.
Yeah.
You added, all right, then we're gonna need a new survey that's up to date without these, and then you can do a site plan where that's shown. All right, I started it, he's sworn in, he's ready to go.
Great. Apologize that I'm late. This is the reason, I just bought a new cellphone. I'd like to observe that it is far easier to buy a new car or a new house. So are you presenting?
Yes.
Liz, you are? Right here.
Can you speak up real loud, though, when you speak?
So, yeah, we are thinking to open a home group daycare in our, in our home, for about.
You can't hear me?
You cannot hear me?
He's hard of hearing, and I'm hard of hearing, so, yeah.
Yeah, so.
People behind you can't hear you.
Yeah, we are thinking to open a home group daycare center for kindergarten, preschool age children for about twelve children. The front of the, we have about one group in the front of our house that accommodated about ten people, children there. That's why we are planning to open the center.
Here a microphone that he could use?
Obviously, we don't, and we'd be using it.
Well, we'll have him stand here if he, because anything else to say. Is that?
Yeah, that's what I have to say. That I said need in the community, in our community for. Sorry, I actually have something. So.
Okay. This isn't, this is a formal zoning petition? You received a packet of information that tells you the information that you're required to prove up?
Yes, I did. But then, the day I did, I was actually, was going out of, I just came back today.
I'm not gonna start to ask questions in order to help make your petition. I will give you an opportunity to, you did not make a presentation to, to give us anything to rely on in order to even consider your case.
Okay.
So I will say that from my view of the record, you have a rather difficult case to prove. But I don't mean to prejudge. So what I will do, if you like, is to continue the hearing for a month or so in order to allow you to find a lawyer or somebody who can make your case, unless you want us to based on the, you know, bare bones information. In which event, I will take testimony from anybody in the audience that wants to speak, close the record, and decide your case at the next recommendation meeting. I can announce the date of that until I know when the man includes. Sir, are you representing?
The objectors.
Objectors on group?
I actually live near the property, so I, I submitted a letter of objection myself. But I'm also an attorney in DuPage County as well.
Yeah, I recognize you. Okay, well, sir, what's your pleasure?
I was gonna say, I live near the property also, and I.
Yeah, well, I'm not on the objectors yet, I just recognized the attorney wanted to make. I knew that this gentleman was an attorney who's pretty poor before. I did not know who he represented, I want to clarify that he did not represent the petition. So what do you want to do, sir? We have a date sometime in June? I don't know, what do you want to do, sir? Was you just make a decision based on the record?
I wanted to know what the objections are, so that I am more prepared.
You want to know?
What the objections are, right?
Well, you gotta read the packet of material, I'm not, I'm.
Oh, so.
I'm the judge, I'm not supposed to tell you.
I, I was told to bring site plan and an email I got from Jessica and also the survey, so which I actually brought. And also, I was told to prove that it's not gonna, I think there are a couple of points, which I can tell, for example, like one of the point was the traffic, like our high, our highways, actually U-shaped, very long driveway. It can accommodate at least sixteen cars in there.
But if you're gonna continue, would you stand here, because your voice is a little soft, so some of these people are having trouble hearing you?
Yeah, I'm having some.
Well, why don't you stand up there and kind of face everybody at the same time? Sorry to make you stand up.
Yeah, so my understanding is that the zoning application is needed if we allow more than eight children, correct? Yeah, when I started this, I didn't know, it's a little learning process for myself. So I started working with the, this year first. And they told me the maximum we could do is twelve full time and four before and after. Geez, if you look at the application, it processes more than sixty. I didn't know at the time, so obviously, we're gonna comply with what you say and best be comments. So right now, this, this zoning commission is really, is actually just four more.
Oh, okay.
Right, if we do a children, there's no zoning application needed. So four more children. And, you know, it's not gonna affect any of the neighbors, because every neighbor has more in their history about an active area. And our house is at the back. It's almost very back of the property. And three sides, two sides, the front side is the triangle, and after that, it is the corner. I'm sorry, of course. And on the left side, we're facing the triangle, it is forest reserve area. On the chat is Mike's house, and on the side, on the right side is the open air. The plan we have is to if we do more than eight, now I just wanted to have that site, so that in future, there is no issue going forward. One that we are planning to do twelve at this moment, because we're kind of starting, right? And the plan is, once we have more children, we'll move to a facility that is more, obviously, we don't want to destroy our own house. It's a lot of children, yeah. So as far as the traffic thing goes, our driveway can accommodate more than sixteen cars. It's a two, it's a huge driveway, and more than, and it's U-shaped in both sides. So we can accommodate parking wise, is about sixteen to twenty, that's not a problem. In terms of traffic in the morning, I don't know if it's gonna be, you know, all coming at once, and drop just keeps, maybe, you know, one or another, but even that, it's not gonna block 山路 at all. In my opinion. The other thing is, the children is gonna be inside most of the time in the winter. We do plan to give them late time in the front of the house, not in the back of their house. And it's not gonna destroy our, even if you're because they're not, they're not gonna know, you know, the children, yeah, or no noise, or.
Okay, so is that what you wanted to tell us?
That's what I wanted to tell us. And it's gonna, you know, my opinion is that if we do open, it's gonna, because it's gonna be small group, small daycare. We have more one-to-one attention to the children and their needs, and. I think it said, it said.
Hey, great. If you're finished, I'll, we usually go to the board, but I would prefer to go to the audience. I don't think it's necessary for us to sort of ask for details. Can I start with the attorney? Well, first of all, how many people want to speak in this case? Two, three? Two plus the attorney? Three, okay, let's not be bashful, folks, I'm gonna have everybody sworn in that wants to speak, so raise your hand if you're gonna speak.
You just sadly swear or affirm the testimony about to give it this cause and out hearing of its truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so have that.
Very good. Would you like to start?
No, I'll let, I'll let. Can I ask a few questions first?
Like cross-examination of the petitioner? Okay, you can, if you want.
I just have a few. Mr. Hussein, do you still live there, because we haven't seen, we haven't seen you there?
Yeah, we are very quiet people. I work in the north of the Chicago, yeah, I say in the, I work for about healthcare diagnostic. I'm a principal software architect to oversee medical device.
You have three children of your own, is that right?
Yes, they are all going to school in Villa Park.
So would they be some of the children that would be in the house with the others that are coming? There are three children in the house. Would they stay in the house while other children are there?
No.
For part of the time?
No.
And you indicated this would be for kindergarten and preschool children, smaller kids.
Smaller, yeah, but not, not, I'm thinking more like four years and, and a five years.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Four and five years age of.
I have no further questions.
Great, you want to make your statement?
I'll let.
Well, I don't want to go back and forth.
You want me to go?
I would prefer.
All right, so here's, here's what I have on this. Obviously, I took a look at the R two residential district, which is where we are here. I personally live on Oak Lane, which is next to, it's the street immediately to the south of the subject property, which is at the corner. It's at the corner of Oak Lane and Klein Road. Now Klein Road is a township roadway, two lanes, forty miles an hour. It's considered by the IDOT and by the DuPage Highway Department as a minor collector. So a minor collector is far from a major artery, or it's far from a arterial roadway. So it's a two-lane road. I can tell you that when I go to work in the morning, I go east to Klein Road on Oak, go to the stop sign. Typically, there's kids there waiting for the bus, there's a couple of buses that come on a daily basis. Then I'll take a right to go to North Avenue, which is roughly two tenths of a mile. There's a big hill just to the, to the south of me. And there's also a hill and a curve just to the north of me. Now, the subject property is at that intersection, the northwest corner. Across the street is the old Wayne Golf Course. As I turn right, I take, I take a look to the left to make sure there's no traffic coming on this roadway, because a lot of cars come to North Avenue, obviously, go to work or other business in the morning. And I'll take a right if I don't see anybody, or there's a car at the top, but these cars come down that roadway in front of the subject property at a pretty rapid rate of speed, often fifty miles an hour. And I'll take a right and start to progress to North Avenue, and lo and behold, there will be a car in my bumper a lot, because I just held that guy up, I'm just giving you a sense of what that roadway is like when you try to exit, you know, Oak Lane, which is what, you know, they're talking about here on the subject property. Very difficult, in my view, of an ingress and egress for a number of vehicles. The driveway itself is a circular driveway. I would suggest that it would only be able to accommodate probably about six cars, nowhere near what I heard today, but I don't know for a fact. So ingress and egress is a primary issue here. I did speak with the, it's Wayne Township roadway. As a Wayne Township Road, the highway commissioner. And I called him, I said, what do you know about this? And he says, I don't know anything about it, and that was yesterday. And he said, he wasn't aware of it, and I explained to him what it was all about. And although I can't, I don't want to sit here and talk for him, he did express some concerns to me, somewhat what I had as well, like that sounds like.
We don't have any comments.
Well, we don't have any comments, but the problem is, I don't know that he did get an opportunity to, to get to, he said he.
Let's just assume that he did, because it's our standard practice.
I understand. So so the ingress and egress, I, I view as a primary issue, and what, what I foresee would happen here is if these mothers what? If these mothers are trying to enter the property in the morning with their small children, they're gonna pull up to the front door, and when you, when you unload a car to bring in a small kindergarten or pre-kindergarten, you're not just gonna open the door and say, there you go. You're gonna walk them in, it's gonna take minutes for these parents to bring their child in in the morning, and then when they come out at night or in the afternoon, the same thing. I, for one, and I'm sure you've seen it as well, when you drive by a daycare center, you often see parents lined up at the door, either to drop off the child or pick them up in the afternoon, they line up. And I, and so the problem here is that when a car comes in and stops to unload their child or to pick up their child, there's only room for a couple of cars behind that car before you get to Klein Road. So other parents trying to.
Cut you short on that.
Yeah, go ahead.
Petitioner is supposed to make that point, that, that wasn't made, so we have your.
Those are my comments on that. You know, I looked at the R two zoning ordinance, and I, I note by way of analogy that there's only one use that is arguably even close to this type of use, which would be like a place of assembly, where you bring people in. And there's four criteria under the, under the zoning ordinance for that type of use, where you assemble people in your own home. This proposed use means none of them. A would be, the property needs to be on an arterial roadway, it is not. B, the primary access has to be arterial roadway, it is not. C, the use is operated using public sewer and water, it is not. D, the use is operated, not operated, in an existing single-family home or dwelling, it is. So all, just by way of analogy, all four of those would be a negative for any type of use of this nature. Now next, I'd like to say that when you, this particular petition is asked for daycare center, which is sixteen or more. So I have to presume that that's the petition on the table and not anything else. Six, when I look at the home occupation section of the code, section thirty-seven, four, one, eight, there's a number of, of problems here. One of them is that if you have a home occupation, which is really what we're seeing, they're, they're having a daycare school all day, and it becomes a home occupation. So one of the requirements is that it shall be operated entirely within the residence. Here, it is not, they're gonna have recess outdoor. Home occupation says that the permit, the teaching or counseling, which is really what we're doing, we're teaching children here, take care and teaching, no more than three persons at a time. Here, there is much more. It also says that twenty percent of the gross floor area of the dwelling unit of, no more than, not utilized more. We don't have those numbers, and they haven't been presented. There's also an issue regarding no, about this noise. You have fifteen or twenty children outdoors in a play area situation, you're gonna have a substantial amount of noise that will be observed by the, by the other occupants. So the the other area that clearly, clearly is a problem is the fact that it's on septic field, because when we look at the DuPage private sewage disposal.
You don't have to go over that point, we have the same point from the county health department.
Yeah, so it, it basically can't get permitted with, on a, on a sewage system, because it, it needs to have it needs to be on public sewer and water based on this particular use. Also, we haven't heard from the fire marshal, I'm not sure why that is. I, I would presume that the fire marshal would need to be able to approve this type of use and have conditions. We haven't had anything to suggest that there's approval from a fire marshal on this type of situation. So looking at the requirements of the zoning ordinance, first, conditional use, this conditional use is not in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the, of the chapter. It is injurious to the neighborhood, it would have an economic impact on the neighbors. It would be detrimental from a standpoint of potential fire hazard. It would diminish the value of land, it would be increased traffic congestion, that'd be a very difficult traffic situation. And it would also create a nuisance from the standpoint of the noise factor of having children in recess out and about in, 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 as he said, in the front yard, which is contrary also to the ordinance, because the, it requires a full fence of a certain nature, and that they have a split rail fence. And so that doesn't comply, they cannot use, as he said, what he stated that his intent was, they cannot do that, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, with respect to the next three gentlemen, if you concur with the remarks expressed by the attorney, you can simply say, I concur with the, with those remarks. If you have something new to add, I'm gonna give you a time limit, but let's begin with the gentleman on this side. Please tell us your name, spell your last name, tell us your address, how close you live to this property, and then whether you support or object the petition.
My name is Guy Martino, I live at twenty-nine W two fifty-one Shagbar Drive, West Chicago. I'm within three hundred feet of the property, and I received a letter because I was within three hundred feet.
Martino was like martini with a O. Your last name spelled?
Last name is Martino, M-A-R-T-I-N-O, first name Guy, G-U-Y.
You support or object? Or are neutral? You support the petition, object to the petition, or?
I object to the petition for several of the reasons that Glenn stated, but in addition, on this property, there's a detention pond. And the detention pond is meant to hold water during heavy rains. That pond fills at least three times a year, sometimes more, because there's a creek that runs right through there. And when that pond fills, as does the pond just north of it, in my subdivision, Promontory Oaks, it closes Klein Road for two days at a time sometimes. By putting a parking area on this piece of property, you're going to shed even more water into an area that's already plagued with flooding. So that's a point I wanted to add to what Glenn was talking about. Glenn already said they're on a septic, which is true, but if they put a parking area on top of that septic, again, they're gonna be foul their own sewer system. This property, if they're gonna become commercial, needs to be on a city water, municipal water, and municipal sewer. The other thing I wanted to raise as an issue, I only learned about this on April twelfth. I have brought in eighteen signatures from people in Promontory Oaks who have said they are against this proposal. I certainly could have had a lot more, had I had more time, but more importantly, the letter says that everybody within three hundred feet was supposed to.
I don't want to talk about who got notice and who didn't get notice.
Pardon?
We, I've been on this board for many, many years. We have never, ever failed to give notice improperly. We have many times been told we didn't give notice properly.
Well, we have forty people that own the lot right next to his, and none of them, I'm the only one that received notice.
Okay.
So we all own a forty, one fortieth interest in the property that butts his, and none of us receive, I'm the only one that received notice. So I would say there was a defect in the notification.
Okay. Thank you.
I suppose we could argue that.
Next.
Hi, my name is Mike Rudson, I live directly next door, do I have something to add, is it a pity about?
Sure, spell your last name.
R-U-T-Z-E-N.
What's your address?
Twenty-nine W two thirty-eight Oak Lane, West Chicago.
You support or oppose?
I oppose. The daycare center. In here, you're gonna see some flats and drawings of the streets.
Okay, we'll take this, what's, is your last name, Watson, exhibit one?
And please be patient with me.
You're on the clock.
I want to be, you know, express my feelings is, is for the right reasons. In this, in this packet, you're gonna see the drawings of his home, my home, and Eric's home. We are so close to that property. In the first photos that you see, his backyard is twenty feet from my screened-in porch. My, our tranquility will be a mess if we have a bunch of children out there. His kids are great, the whole, we have no issues with, with the neighborhood and children, there are thirteen children on the block, three with disabilities. We're very concerned about the traffic going into the neighborhood, as Glenn has brought. The traffic going into the neighborhood as Glenn has brought up. He's telling me it's now saying that the kids are gonna go in the front yard. In this photo, you're gonna see. Large oak trees with huge amounts of timber that fall on a regular basis. Any one of those kids could be killed by any one of those branches. On any day during the summer, ten to fifteen golf balls fly over into that area because it's on the Old Wayne Golf Course. I think the biggest issue for us is the safety of the neighborhood. The traffic issues as it's drawn in the photos, you can literally see where the buses drop the kids off, where his driveway is. And the north and south hills going down. It is a rough road there. I do believe that. There are no fire hydrants, no sidewalks in the area. All of these things are safety issues. We've had several houses in the neighborhood completely burned to the ground because it's an unincorporated area. There is no way of stopping a major fire if there was something. I, I think he said something that his kids would not be participating in this. I don't understand that since his wife homeschools the children now.
No.
Well, that's what it was.
So my, my wife is the teacher. She is teaching in I F S in Villa Park. My, all the children also were with her in the same school.
But from my understanding, in the past several years, the children were homeschooled, schooled, that may have changed. Our, our biggest concern is our tranquility. We bought the house in a private neighborhood. We wanted to read, I've lived there thirty seven years. Guy's been there thirty seven years. Most of these people have been there ten, fifteen, twenty years. We would have never purchased a house with the business on the corner to the entrance of the cul-de-sac. The short end of it is between Sky's petition and mine, we have over thirty five signatures of homeowners. Who do not want to see this in the neighborhood. Not for any other reason that we like the neighborhood to stay private and non-business environment. That's the short end of it. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, sir. And then the last gentleman.
Hi, my name is Eric Viol. That's V as in Victor, I O H L. I also object to petition. I agree with everything these guys have said. I wanna reiterate that traffic on Klein Road is crazy. I look, we look directly across the street to the home. And behind us is a, it's basically it's a blind hill and teenagers, mostly boys, are known to come to that street to try and take air. And you hear it twice a day at least. Especially in the summertime, so and that's coming right down. You know.
Now, how does that apply to what's before us?
It's coming right down the hill.
I wanted to know what type of property.
I used to do that when I was a kid.
Have a wheelie.
Right, if you see the photos.
Okay, I got it, I got it.
And in the wintertime, this is a very slick hill.
So traffic is a problem as the prior three people were.
Exactly, and it's dangerous because cars do slide off the road in the winter as they have slid into that property. And also because we look directly across, I'm, this is the whole focus of our, this giant window in our family room. It's definitely gonna impact value of our property.
But thank you very much, sir. Does anyone on the board feel compelled to ask any questions about this case? Okay, sir, you wanna make any concluding remarks?
Yes. As I told you, if you look at the survey, our driveway is about. A U shape. Each shape is about hundred feet long. Roughly, and about twenty two, twenty four feet wide. Average car length is about fourteen feet, so you can calculate how many cars can fit in that driveway. I'm thinking, you know, I actually, we have, we have known from the last three, four years that we own that house. That easily we can fit sixteen to twenty cars in there. So I don't think the Klein Road would be blocked by any reason. And I don't think it's gonna impact the traffic while having four more extra car in the road in the morning or in the afternoon. And as, as far as the noise, as I told you guys, the front is a Klein Road on the left is the. What they call, or a scissors. And all the houses are far, far away from my property. So I don't think that. That the noise of a children or ten, twelve children playing in the front yard is gonna disturb anybody else. As far as the D S A, D C F S regulations. The home daycare center. Group, home group daycare center. Does not require a. Health certificate from health department. I talked to the person in Naperville. D C F S, she confirmed me that. I know that was an objection from the health department about the septic. She confirmed me that there is no regulation from the state or, or D C F S to require that kind of certificate. And as far as the noise goes or in traffic condition goes. I live in the property and I have to come in and come out every day, couple times a day. There's hardly any traffic in the, in that pipeline. It is a cut through road from between north and, north of the avenue that. Army Trade Road. So sometimes people do take that road to go from one. On the other road. It, yeah, I've seen people that who speak on that road. But then I'm also in the same road every morning as I also have to come in and come out. From that road, so I don't think that is anything, anything negatively impacting. Having a daycare home, home daycare center there impacted the traffic by adding four, you know, couple cars there. Another, and, and again, I just told you, right? I learned from, you know, I know many things in the process. If we were to add a home group daycare center for eight children, we would not need. A zoning application. As far as Paul is the guy who handles this. We are here just because. We are thinking to do twelve and twelve is the maximum that I learned recently. From D C F S that that is the maximum would be allowed twelve full time. Two for. I don't not know why people think that is gonna be. Devaluing their, on that. We have schools in the neighborhood and there are properties in the neighborhood. In fact, if you have a school there, it raised the property value instead of you defending the property.
That all?
That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, sir. We'll close the case. The record will be closed. Next step in the process is to. Make a decision about this case at a recommendation meeting. I will not be available May four, which is, I guess. So we can hold this Wednesday, May third, or at the June recommendation meeting. I'll leave that. Whatever's most convenient to the board members.
Just a point, the survey is outdated and it's not, he hand drew it, so he's gonna really need an updated survey and a site plan.
I. Gonna address that to petitioner.
This is the survey I got from.
Okay, hold on, sir. This does, this is not adequate.
No, no, sorry.
If this matter proceeds, we will make a decision about this case. If the decision is favorable. You would be required to. The matter will be delayed before it goes to the next step until you produce the required documents. If it's not a favorable decision, I don't want you to go through the expense. Of all of these additional required documents of a current survey and a technical site plan. So let's go back to the. You guys wanna do this Wednesday, May third, or June recommendation? Okay, we'll meet at on May three. In this room at five thirty, we'll deliberate about this case. I don't think there will be any other cases. On the docket for that evening, but all of you are. Invited to attend. There will be no participation from the public because the public record and, and public hearing. Records closed. The hearing was tonight. So there won't be any public participation. You'll just hear our deliberations and our vote. Okay? Five four was never scheduled. Well, okay. It's five three.
May I ask one question?
Sure.
Will the documents that we submitted be incorporated into, into the deliberation?
Part of the, it's all part of the public record, all this that I received as ejectors exhibit, got the gentleman's name. It's part of our record. Okay, thanks for close for this evening.